Six thirty.
I know.
Six thirty.
You're always a little slow.
I know. But I get done quick. Not gonna turn six thirty, huh? Yeah. You know what? It went from six twenty-nine to six thirty-one. Now we're late.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Aye, welcome. We have a special presentation tonight that we're gonna start with. Chief, you wanna do this?
Sure.
And we'd like to have it done up here so we can get it on camera and stuff.
Absolutely.
There's a microphone up here, chief.
Okay. You want me to use this one?
Yeah.
Alright.
Adam, Jason, do you wanna... Any... Come up front and center here. I can... John? Mayor, members of the council, appreciate the opportunity to... To make this presentation this morning and... And there's several people to thank here. As you know, over the last few years, the police department's been interested in trying to do some youth activities on the south side of town, specifically in the area Discovery School and... And related to soccer and basketball and some of those things. So, over the course of time, had some conversations with Adam. We moved some basketball courts over there, hoops over there, and they're gonna be installed. And then we had a conversation with John about possibly securing a grant to help expand on that ability to provide recreational activities for Wade Park youth. And John applied to the Bernix Family Foundation. And so, I guess this is an example of a kind of public-private collaboration in an area that it's needed. And I'm very excited about the possibility that we're gonna be able to afford kids a place to play and to learn. We hope to expand our youth soccer program and some of those kinds of things. So, I... Maybe I'll... I hope you guys will maybe say a word or two. I'll... Adam Holm from the school district, John, and then Jason Bernick is here. So, thank you.
We're so excited about this partnership. You know, we've talked to the mayor a lot about giving students opportunities to play during the school day, after school, and on weekends. And we partnered with the local Boy Scouts, who's gonna be in collaboration with the district, to create, hopefully, three to five brand-new soccer fields, two new basketball courts on the resurface. We already have a fabulous tenant center. So, it's just a great opportunity. You know, we're so thankful for this and for John that he wrote it, Ben, to help collaborate. But most important, our mayor, who pulls me out there all the time, and I know we met with you. What can we do to get all of our students involved? And thank you so much for this because we're truly gonna impact our whole seven-four-two community thanks to this grant.
John? Yeah, go ahead. John, did you wanna say anything?
Put you on the spot. About that. This is giving back to the community, and it's one way I do. And I wanna thank Jason and Bernix for making this for our community. It's gonna make a difference for our kids. Thank you.
I guess I just wanna say thank you too, because it means a lot to the community and to me. Yeah, that's it for me.
Jason, thanks so much for the generous support from the Bernix Family Foundation and very much appreciated. And I'll give you the mic for a second.
Well, sure. Well, it's really good to be a part of this project and really appreciate the opportunity to have a little bit of fun here at the meeting tonight. And this playground will be kind of in our back door with our business. And we really... It's really important, not just for, you know, the Wade Park community, but we support the community wherever we go and wherever we do business. And certainly Wade Park is right at the heart of all that. Giving back to the community is something that's really been part of our history since we started in nineteen sixteen. And, you know, now that we have more resources, you know, giving back is a bigger piece of that giving. And it's important to us because it helps make a stronger community. And it's this strong community that's helped us maintain our business for that hundred-and-four years that we've been around. So, it's an honor to be part of this and really, really appreciate this opportunity.
Alright. Alright. Photo op. Just for the off... Just for the audience too that might be listening. Bernix Family Foundation is giving a check for twenty thousand dollars to help with this park project.
Alright, again, thanks a lot. Thanks to Bernix and John and the park department and everybody for putting this all together, so... Alright, review and approve council agenda. Move to approve, is this?
I'll second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Proposed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda. Item A, approve twenty-twenty purchase Docable Del Lepp Top Computers. Item B, approve temporary Minnesota lawful gambling permit for Apollo Eagles Diamond Club Booster. Item C, approve partnership with Center Minnesota Mental Health Center Child Response Initiative. Item D, approve special animal license for Reina McLeeland. Item E, approve Erickson Electric Company proposal to repair CT cabinet at City Hall. Item F, approve two one-day temporary liquor license for St. Joseph Church. Item G, approve resolution approving Twenty-Eighth Avenue Roundabout Project. And item H, approve resolution approving County Road Seventy-Five Concrete Work.
Yeah, just to point a note for G and H. Did both resolutions read the same in your packet?
Except... They are with the exception...
They look so similar.
They are exactly the same except for one is refers to County Road Seventy-Five. And then the other one is Roundabout. I had to look at them twice too because they came from the county.
Different things that they're doing this year, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, I'm move to approve.
I'd like to pull C. Do you wanna approve A, B, D, E, F, G, H?
So, move.
I'll second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Proposed, passed unanimously. Item C.
Well, see, I'd just like to have Dave maybe explain this partnership that we have here and why we're probably going to approve it tonight for him. So that people just understand really what the police department and the city are doing to help the community.
Right. Appreciate the opportunity to do that, actually. The... Our support for the CAC, this would probably be the third year that we've done this. By working with the Child Advocacy Center, which is part of Centricare, is when you have a child victim of a sex assault, the ability for us to collaborate with the CAC for that child to be interviewed by a trained forensic interviewer, okay? Now, we can choose to train and have somebody on staff, which we did. But there's a couple of things with that. One, positions change. And so, we were constantly training different investigators to work and to be able to do a corner house interview within you have a young child victim. So, this partnership with the CAC basically allows us to reduce our ongoing training costs and gives us access to a inexperienced and trained forensic interviewer that can work with us to help that child victim. And this is... It's the corner. It's called corner house training. It's a specialized forensic interviewing for young children. And it's a great partnership for us to be able to work with Centricare in this way.
Alright, thanks. Move to approve C.
Second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Proposed, passed unanimously. Regular agenda item A, Asteria Hotel License Renewal. Jeff?
Mayor and council, I put a memo in your packets. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to read that. All I can say is, is the place is... There's no violation sitting there. I talked to the County Health Department today. They are ready to issue the license. And if you got any questions, myself and... And the owner are here. So, him, Bokta, is sitting there. So, if you have questions, I'm ready to answer them.
I do have one.
Sure.
Two weeks ago, they were going to reduce the west building to rubble. In two weeks, they rejuvenated that whole building?
Well, you gotta understand, they had already tore out a lot of the carpet. A lot of the stuff had already been rehabbed as far as the mold being mitigated. So, really, all they had to do is they had to put some flooring in, move furniture in, move new beds in. And they were pretty much ready to go. Because all the damage was in the other building. And this building had the people that had been living there for a while, had some issues with cats. That had been already vacated and done up. So, all they had to do is really throw some paint in the walls and move new furniture in, and it's ready to go.
Council, any other comments, questions, concerns? There's only one thing I can say. I will... I'll approve it because I don't know if I have a leg to stand on that. I can't. But I gotta tell you that this hotel's got a real bad history. So, this is up to you two people sitting right there to make this work. Because if it doesn't, the next thing I will recommend, we knock it down no matter what.
So, I mean, we are prepared to go through there once a month and inspect it. And I think the county will... If we see something that's of interest, we've agreed with the county to give them a phone call and they'll come in and do an inspection. But that's where we're currently at.
Sounds good.
Just remember, it isn't just the inside. It's the things that happen in and around and with it. And I'm sure our chief will let us know also if there are problems out there. So, that is, it's not just the inside, but it's the whole area, the whole big ball. So...
Alright, somebody wanna make a motion? I'll make a motion to approve reviewing Asteria's hotel license. Effective immediately?
Effective immediately.
There, in the suggested motion, also included the conditions that were presented at the meeting, which are just the findings from the last staff report. So, if you wanna include those.
I assume that when we have the ordinance out there, it covers that, but I would include that as well. Thank you.
There were certain stipulations, I think, that you had put in place.
About inspections and they pay and all that.
I would expect that's all part of it.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify so that we have that right.
No, that's fine. That's all part of it.
And I second the motion.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
I proposed.
Alright.
You're open.
You're good.
Good luck. I think you got a gold mine sitting there, so...
Thank you, but it's been a tough challenge for the last few months. And last two weeks, I've been working like fifteen hours a day, but, you know.
Yeah.
The building just needed... We got it out, pretty much everything, because most of the... Ninety-nine percent of the problem was on the... In the other building. But I wasn't gonna open this building, so I took out the carpet and furniture and everything. But I have a lot of resources to get it in the last two weeks, and we put it in and we installed, so...
Great.
Well, congratulations.
I thank you very much, and we'll try our best not to let the city down.
Alright.
We have talked to police chief and have training with our staff and everything too, so...
Thank you.
Yeah. I just wanna say thank you.
Alright. Good luck. NBE, one thirty-six Division Street, CUP, event center space, week care adult daycare. John?
I'll make a brief report here. This request was submitted on behalf of the tenant with permission of the property owner to utilize the existing adult daycare business, the tenant space, which will continue... Is proposed to continue to operate during regular daytime hours. But what they wanna do is use it during evening and weekend hours periodically as event center space. Because it's not an explicitly listed use in the B-two district that it's in, we opted to categorize it under the kind of the catch-all category that uses the city council determines to be of similar nature to listed conditional uses and found not to be detrimental to the city's general health and welfare. I note that we do have similar uses in the same districts. We have the... Both the Moose Lodge and the Legion that are considered event gathering-type spaces. Those predate the current ordinance, but they never pose any trouble. Likewise, we have the park event center located nearby, much larger than this, much, much larger. But that's also located in a B-three district, a little bit different, and was approved by the planning and development process. In a case like this, if it were something they were doing, you know, once or twice or a couple of times, we probably wouldn't require the conditional use permit. But because it's something they wanna do on a regular, semi-regular basis, we thought that the conditional use permit was the appropriate way to treat it. Basically, the proposed use would be allowable Monday to Friday, seven PM till eleven PM, and Saturday and Sunday from nine AM until eleven PM. No request beyond those hours. But I'd recommend the conditions allow an extra hour beyond that time for cleanup after event. That's pretty common for event center space, that once it's over, you get a little time to clean up before you have to be out of there. No plans or requests for alcohol service at all. Food would be catered in from off-site. They have a food service license from Stearns County that can be utilized for the facility. The property has the parking to accommodate the use. The parking requirement is actually the same for the adult daycare and the event center space, the same calculation. Realistically, the demand is likely to be a little bit higher for a event center use, but it's not that large a space that's gonna create a burden, I don't believe. We... I'd recommend that if approved, that the the building official established the maximum occupancy for the event center space, that that would be posted onsite in the main area as well, just to ensure that everybody's well aware of that. They don't anticipate or really plan to have large events. They're talking, you know, twenty to thirty people. But trying to maximize the use of that space. That being said, I would recommend approval of the request with the conditions as outlined. Planning commission reviewed and did recommend approval unanimously as well. We did not have any concerns or comments raised during the public hearing at all.
Alright, council, any questions?
Is this building an area completely ADA accessible and with the proper restroom areas and...
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Oh, that agreed.
That's via the adult daycare side of things, that it met recent inspections. And I would assume that the folks that would be using it for adult daycare purposes would tend to need the mobility components more than anyone that would be using it for event center space. But we would have the building official probably double-check it to confirm when they do their occupancy calculation as well. But to... As far as I'm aware, it meets all the current standards. And it also has the dual, similar to the Asteria, it has the county licensing component as well for their side too. So, it gets another entity that looks at it periodically.
Does he have any idea what the capacity is going to be in there?
I don't. That's why I left it up to the building official to set a maximum occupancy.
He just turned around when he heard building official.
The narrative that they submitted advised that it's between twenty and thirty people most commonly. You know, some maybe, maybe more. They don't intend to have weddings or anything in there, especially since it's kind of targeted towards the Somali community. And in the Somali culture, the weddings are an all-night affair. They begin at, basically, in the evening and go all night. But they don't wanna get into that because it's just... It's probably more challenging than they wanna deal with. So, it's gonna be probably more, you know, group get-togethers, folks that are new to the area, new immigrants utilizing for some of those, you know, workshops and things, how to work within the community, renters' rights. Those are some of the things that they referenced in their narrative.
Because the reason I ask that is, when I looked at it, the bathrooms look pretty small. Is that gonna be a problem if they have... I don't know what you're... Like I said, the capacity has everything to do with it. And like I said, the bathrooms look not very large in there to handle any more than twenty people.
Yeah, it may not be a bad idea. With that in mind, maybe we can revise the conditions or add a condition that just to give a little bit more of a safeguard that any facilities would have to meet ADA requirements for the applicable occupancy. I'd suggest something along that line. That might not be a bad incorporation.
Hey, anything else?
Can we sunset a conditional use permit?
Nope, those are only interim use permits.
That's a problem.
I don't...
That building could remain.
I don't think it is.
It could remain that forever and ever.
Kind of an office building. It's has that little corner set aside.
It's been used at a school. It's been...
Yeah, used as a daycare.
If the use doesn't continue for a year, it automatically goes away. So, it expires.
So, if they sell the building and something else...
If they sell the building, a new owner could come in there and utilize it in the same manner. But if it is sold and that use is not... If that use doesn't continue after it goes for a year, if there's a year break in between, then the use goes away.
Oh, and in a case like this, this is a tenant space as well, so tenants sometimes...
Come and go.
They do change over time. It's not uncommon. I know there's been a couple of tenants in this building in the couple of years I've been here.
And others may choose to use it in a different way.
Alright, any other questions?
I am gonna make a motion to approve the conditional permit with all the recommendations or conditions as mentioned.
Does that include the ADA requirement?
It meets it. It's the same office building you drive by.
No, no, no. We're going by capacity and number of...
I'm not worried about it. No.
I'll include the caveat that that's more of a function of the building code that I would ask that our building official review. I mean, maybe Frank's right. Maybe it is the same requirements. But in case it's not, we would have them double-check and confirm in any case. But if you're more comfortable putting a condition on, I have zero issue.
Because the building official will give us an occupancy number anyway there, so...
Where the...
That's when your head turned around as you were walking out.
Can I wait just one second? Because we do have a motion. Can I, can I wait just one second, cause we do have a motion, I don't know that we have a second on that motion and I want to, and so then maybe reference like the second.
You can add John's reference to my motion.
Okay, is there a second and then you could call for discussion?
Yeah, there is, okay, Jeff.
Who's the second?
Oh.
Okay, Vic, all right, I just wanted to get that on, off the table for...
Yeah, I'm not real familiar with, with this, but if it's a, an event center and it's an A occupancy, it might be a change of occupancy that would drive more requirements. If it has, depending upon occupant load, there's a set amount of facilities that are required depending upon what the occupant load is, so we'll, we'll look at that
Okay.
when the plans come in, or if there's no change in anything. That, that change of occupancy would drive it, so that's...
And forgive, may, forgive me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but maybe that might determine their maximum occupancy as well, that they could have X number of people and not trigger a requirement to put in.
Well, actually, we're gonna go by the square footage and that's the number we're gonna use. And that'll drive the, drive the issue and, and so that'll be what it...
We've also raised the ADA issue, Jeff. The ADA issue, I haven't seen the facility, but Mike says those restrooms are really small. And I know from experience, we need five feet to be able to turn a wheelchair around ahead of a stool. We need five feet to rotate.
But if they're, if they, if they don't have to make any changes, I can't drive that issue. If they have to make a change and there's a building permit issued, then we can, we can influence some of that. But it all depends on, on what that looks like, so. That, that's a depends answer, I hate to give you that, but that's what it is.
It depends on, but it all could be a condition for us.
So it, it, yeah.
All right, anything else? My motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. All right, item C, consider phased retirement agreement and changes to Minnesota post-retirement plan.
Council members, as you are aware, we have been working with Keith Lindberg and I believe it was last year, he announced that he'd like to go into a phased retirement, which as, during the budget discussion, that's kind of allowed us to do some transitioning in our departments to, to really see whether or not we have the ability to train a new person into that finance position. And so it gives Keith the opportunity to continue to work part-time, while also allowing us the opportunity to utilize his knowledge and expertise to train our staff to take that on. Finance directors are very difficult positions in government to replace and define, cause they're so specialized. And so we're very pleased that he's willing to consider this. So the agreement that you have before, before he was an agreement that I'd actually received from the League of Minnesota Cities. And it's really laid out based off of the, the way that PERA defines how a phased retirement. So last year during the legislative session, PERA allowed for a permanent consideration of their phased retirement. And so there's certain stipulations that have to go in, so the number of hours and things like that, that we have to keep track of. And so essentially what we did with the phased retirement is basically cut all of the benefits that, as a finance director, that Keith would normally receive in half. And we tried to do that in the most equitable way. Because of IRS reasons, he, he is not able to be under our health insurance plan. He's also not able to receive any contributions for this entire year for, for our health savings plan. And so typically the city contributes between our health premiums and that HSA, twelve thou, twenty-five thousand, I think, five hundred dollars. And so when you divide that in half, we took those benefits and put it into a deferred comp situation as a choice for him or the other benefits that we offer to other employees and give him that flexibility. And so he would be able to receive up to twelve thousand five hundred dollars in those benefits, anything that...
Seven fifty, I had.
I'm sorry, yes, it is, and
Okay, yeah.
Keith gave me one number once and then wait, we were like, no, it's, no, this is the right one, so I apologize. And so those numbers go into that, anything that goes above that amount would be something that would be paid for out of his own pocket for benefits. And so we tried to keep the most equitable way, I think it's, there's benefits for both, for him as well as the city. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions related to that. And maybe I'll stop there, cause there's one other component to this that I want, that we need to consider as well. But if you have any questions about the actual phased retirement agreement, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Council, any questions?
Are we gonna be, I'm assuming we'll be pretty flexible on his hours that he wants to work?
He sets his hours, we had to move him from a salary to an hourly because we have to keep track of his hours and he cannot exceed the halftime hours. And so that was a requirement in the league, I said to, I asked the league, I'm like, well, how do I do this? And they, they recommended that you just move him to an hour, to an hourly.
Wants to work ten hours one week?
He can do that.
Can do that or whatever.
Yeah, it's just, he knows and we are working through Lori, our payroll HR clerk, on making sure that whatever reporting requirements we are obligated for PERA so that we don't put him into a negative situation with that, that we have that done. So yes, he has complete flexibility as he has, so.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah.
I had talked to, sent Sean an email this afternoon. One of the paragraphs here, I don't quite understand, it's, it's on page two, just above, other group health insurance plans. It says in proceed, in preceding years, the city agrees to pay you up to one-half of the dollar amount they agree to pay towards health insurance.
Yeah.
Is, is that expected to be proceeding years, not previous years?
It's going forward, yes, I'll make that change, yeah.
That was a typo.
And so what that means, Vic, is essentially that what we, we have a dollar amount that we contribute up to for each of our employees that's set for twenty-twenty. We have union negotiations that will be set for twenty-twenty-one, those numbers may change. So we will take basically half of what we agree to pay full-time employees and give towards that. It was difficult to explain, so I tried to do it in the example so that you could understand how we were dividing that out. But then I also wanted to make sure that you understood that that number could change based off of what our contributions...
Are we talking the preceding, are we talking succeeding years?
For, forward.
Yeah, well, this is backwards, so we need to change that word.
Yeah.
Yeah, that word needs to be changed.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions on this? Hey, what else you got?
Okay, so then the other piece to this is that our employees, and it's required under the council to approve this, but these are contributions that are made, you know, purely just by our own employees. What is what we call Minnesota, our Minnesota healthcare savings account plan. So essentially what we do is, we have each individual group, so each one of our union groups is its own member and then our non-union employees are all in another group. And we each contribute a percentage of our wages that go into this tax-free and can be used tax-free for medical purposes for expenses typically when you retire. You can use them if you leave employment here as well. We also have unused balances of our sick leave that will go into those for different groups. Now that we have this option of a phased retirement, somebody that's in that phased retirement no longer has an interest in putting that one percent, which is what our non-union group contributes as part of their salary into it. So we're allowed to create a separate group because now he's different than our full-time employees and we can call him a non-union phased retirement option employee that basically allows for us to put any of those balances that he would otherwise have for sick leave to go in there, but nothing else. There's really no advantages for Keith at this particular point for him to do that. But this would apply to anybody else that we would have that would go into a phased retirement. We aren't putting a policy together for phased retirement, so you can consider those phased retirement plans on a case-by-case basis. Cause not every position would that be a warranted thing, depending upon where we're at with our organization and decisions that we may want to make. So as part of that, the language that you have in here essentially covers that and so that would require a separate motion for the council to make if you, and so...
So does, does it matter how you sequence that, are we gonna approve the retirement savings plan group changes?
I would, I would recommend that one first and then do the, the other one.
Well, I would make that motion.
To approve the Minnesota post-retirement savings plan group changes?
Yes, to approve the savings plan group.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, and then the other one?
Move to approve that one?
With the, uh...
With the change?
Pro agreement as presented?
No, as the change in the...
That one is the one, I'll make that one, that was a motion Mike that Vic had made. I'll make that change in that.
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, all right.
Thank you.
Item D, consider purchase of chairs for the ledge.
There's the chair that we have all known and liked, that we, if you recall, as we looked at that, we've looked at a number of different chairs. I think the last time we checked and talked with you, we were looking at maybe different color options, concerned maybe about the heat and stuff. We did have in your packet a couple of different color options. We did learn today that any other color option is more money, it's about a dollar...
Fifty thirty.
Dollar fifty?
Thirty.
Dollar thirty, excuse me, a chair more. Quite honestly, I think when Bill and I, I don't know that we think that it's a big enough issue, I think the black, to be honest, will look the best.
Yes.
It's up to you guys, but from staff's perspective, we'd like to save the dollar thirty on a chair if we, if we can, but you tell us what you want to do.
Well, most of them shows are gonna be at night and the sun's already gonna be down, so there isn't gonna be a...
I don't think it's gonna be as hot as...
A big issue of them absorbing the heat either.
No, I don't either, I think blacks gonna make a nice, I think it's gonna stick, stand out, I think it'll make it look classier.
Yeah, the other thing I'm gonna show you up here is that, the, everybody was wondering about the ganging option. He was not able to get us a chair that had the ganging hardware on it. So he sent us a picture and it's kind of hard to see, but if you look in here, there's just this little stub here on this side and the other side, there's a receiver for that stub. This is just showing you a picture of them ganging together, so you can see at this point, this is how they're ganging together. So, that was included in, in the quote that...
That is included in the...
That is included into it, correct.
All right, somebody want to move something? Move the chair.
Well, I didn't really like the choice of chair, but I see a chair that's not easily repaired, it's more disposable than other models.
Well, they're kind of all that way, I think.
Yeah, some have metal.
This one seemed to be the most maintenance-free, so.
Well, let's get a motion on the table.
I'll make a motion for the black.
I'll second.
Yes.
I got a motion, a second to buy black chairs, five thousand of them.
Second.
Whatever.
The Air Flex model is one-four-one-zero, yeah, gee, sorry. I didn't hear you when you were...
I didn't say it until now.
With ganging option.
Yeah, yeah.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I think we found ourselves some chairs. All right. Item six, approve bills.
Question on the bill. Is there a three-thousand-dollar panic button at Public Works? Where was the panic button installed?
A panic button installed?
Yeah.
I'd have to ask Carla or Jesse.
Yeah.
I don't know. Where, is that out of your department, Bill?
I don't remember that, but...
You remember what...
I thought it mentioned Public Works, but...
I'll ask her and then I'll email you back.
Get you back.
All right.
Any other questions on the bills?
Well, I do have a comment for Dave, he was right on the price of that repair on that squad.
Yeah, don't buy a Ford Explorer, whatever the heck they are. Cause I did seduce some checking on it and...
That wasn't me.
He's right. Ford is absolutely...
Only fifteen hundred dollars in labor to replace a two-hundred-dollar part.
Yeah, I, I, I know there was questions on that bill, and I think you maybe understand that now, but there was also a transmission issue with the power takeoff unit, so that, that exacerbated the size of that bill. But yes, the, the location of the water pump is problematic on the force.
I'll keep up on their lawsuit and tell them you want to be in part of it.
Okay, I'll do it.
All right, any wishes on the bills? Move to approve?
I'll second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. I do have, actually, I got quite a few. I have a thank you from Anna Maria's Alliance for the fifteen-hundred-dollar donation that we gave them this year from our charitable gambling fund. I have a thank you from Boys and Girls Club for the two-thousand-dollar donation we gave them for smart moves from our charitable gambling fund. I do have a thank you from Centra Care Health Foundation for the five-thousand-dollar gift we gave for the Child Advocacy Center from our charitable gambling fund. I do have a thank you from Minnesota, well, it's not the Minnesota, the Initiative Foundation. Doesn't say how much we gave them, but whatever we gave them, they're thanking us for it from our charitable gambling fund. And I got a thank you from the Paramount Center for the Arts for the one-thousand-dollar contribution from the charitable gambling fund. All I got, Sean? Oh, there was nothing at the open forum today, public...
Just to let you know, Heidi Fraking, our new administrative associate, started today. She is, so many of you will probably see her in the office, maybe answering the phones or if you come in to, to pay a bill. And then also just wanted to touch base, the League of Minnesota Cities has their legislative conference, the March eighteenth and nineteenth. The Coalition also has their lobbying day, March eleventh. So if you have an interest in attending any of them for the league, because that's two days, I would like to know that today if you can, because I will have to go and make the hotel reservations to take advantage of the discount as it expires today, so.
Be down for March eleventh.
Okay.
Is that the League of Minnesota Cities?
The league, the coalitions is the eleventh. That's their lobbying day, and the leagues is...
I would, I would like to attend that one.
To the coalition?
Yes.
Okay. And I've already, I already knew, how about you, Frank, did you get a chance to?
The coalition, yeah, is anybody going to the league?
I might.
No, I'm not going to any of them, I don't think.
Right.
Okay, all right, that's all I...
March is busy, so, all right. Terry? Bill? John?
I do have a...
Next?
I'm gonna go next time. Uh, just a reminder, mainly for anyone that, that watches these later at home. The census will be coming out pretty shortly, mid-March. The, basically, the census is transitioning to the, instead of a letter right away, you'll get a postcard with a, a web link that you can go and do it on your phone or on your computer, your tablet, whatever. For the first time, you'll have the ability to do it electronically. But those should start landing in mailboxes mid-March. If you don't respond to that, then you'll get a letter, then eventually a vi- a visit from a census taker, as in all the days gone by. Just encourage folks to undertake that and make sure that they get everyone in their house and their dwelling counted. For every person that doesn't get counted, that should be, that's about fifteen thousand dollars in federal funding that, that's lost through the various programs. The business world, economic development side, they use census data to decide where to put businesses. So if you want new and different kind of businesses, places to eat, fill out that census. And also the congressional districting is all tied to census response too, so real easy to fill out, but I encourage everyone to, to do just that.
All right, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Chief? I didn't ask you. Beacon to your...
The federal government decided to throw a primary election on March third, which means we can't do on March second. So I'll be in touch with you about dates, I forgot about that, my apologies. So we will stay tuned for more details on exactly when, but... Well, let, let me, let's, I'll follow up with you, we don't need to decide that today, so we can make sure that we look at everyone's calendars for availability.
All right. We have nothing else, we are adjourned at seven thirteen.